On page 5, CEO on 12.3, the road patching. You have any update on that? It was postponed due to Carnival celebration.
Your worship, members of council, members of admin. Yes, this exercise was targeted for any time after the Carnival season. Because as you are aware, during that period, we ourselves were doing some patching within the city. However, based on new information that would have come to this administration, even via the city engineer, as well as I am speaking with Mr. Ram Singh, which is the director of highway. What they required of us at that particular point in time is not what initially was.
There was a collaboration.
Yes, because in that previous discussion, we were looking at some resources, which included equipment, our position, the materials. Subsequent to that, the exercise has evolved where the corporation was now required to provide together with those other items, was required to provide labour. And the work was being done on weekends. The corporation was not in a position to guarantee that. One, because it entails additional cost on weekend. And two, our experience is not with that type of material. Our experience with this cold mix, not hot mix. Hot mix is at a very elevated temperature and requires sitting pee pee, as well as other equipment and training in dealing with. I mean, we explained all of this to the director of highways.
Because you know, our citizens are completing the streets sign a very badly. From Marabala to La Rima, potholes all over. And it is having a way and tear on maintenance of vehicles. And of course, this very difficult economical time. So if we can follow up on this, see where we are. If it requires sourcing or whatever it is from other areas, maybe could we really have to address this issue?
Your worship, I just like to continue, please. In terms of, the engineer has come up with a plan in terms of what we are trying to do. So some balances. And these balances, we are looking at way back at maybe as 2010, 2012 coming up, in which we would be able to utilise now for road patching programme within each electoral district. The engineer has promised by next financial meeting, next meeting of the finance committee, he would have an update for us, as well as a recommendation to go forward, your worship.
Okay, I look forward to this initiative because we have been bombarded with complaints from residents. We continue on page 5. Page 6.
Your worship, members of council, CEO, members of administration. There's a voice that arises at this moment to refer to page 6 and 12.6.1 to mention again, as I'm sure it will be mentioned by you, your worship and others, but to take this opportunity to single out a particular steel band, captained by a distinguished gentleman for many years, the Caribbean Airlines Skiffleboard Steel Orchestra, and congratulate them for placing second in the national Pararaba finals and first in the hearts of all San Fernandians. And I know, your worship, you may speak of this later, but it would be remiss of us not to pay special tribute.
Deputy Mayor, I surely appreciate your sentiments. We had an outstanding year with all three steel bands, particularly small band and medium band category. I know councillor Smith will have some questions about that because her band didn't do too well. But councillor Wilson, who represents Pan elders, and I think councillor Joseph, who represent Golden Hands, will be beaming with pride. Councillor Wilson also take claim to skip on the coffee. So we will speak about that later on, but thank you for your sentiments. Good year for San Fernando. And this is why we had that celebration on Saturday evening, to invite our stakeholders to share with them, just to say thank you in this very difficult time and their passion and commitment for the arts. So may we continue on page 7?
Your worship, members of council, members of, Mr. CEO, members of administration. I rise to ask for update on 12.9.4, the PSIP, as long as money is being released to the city corporation.
Your worship, members of council, members of administration. With respect to 2018 PSIP or DP proposals, the local roads and, sorry, the drainage and irrigation proposals were submitted to the ministry. Those proposals were checked by their project officers. Having done so, it went through their system, their bureaucratic system. It is now with the Ministry of Finance. We are presently in the process of completing the same process for the local roads and bridges. The project officer was here on Monday and yesterday. And I believe as of yesterday, they had already checked and were satisfied with all the road proposals. So those will soon, hopefully within the next week or two, will be forwarded to the ministry as well. The other smaller allocations for buildings, local buildings and the likes, those were also checked between yesterday and Monday because the project officer came and she wanted to do all one time. So we were happy for that, those were checked as well.
Councillor, you satisfied?
Yes, I'm satisfied, but I like the word received to be, checho will be received at the minutes, because we haven't received the money as yet.
Unless it was received. It may not be an error in the council. We need to clarify that, was it received or would it be received?
Your worship, members of council, members of administration. We have not actually received any funds yet.
So then there's an error there and it should be fixed. Could we get from Mr. Martin an update on 12.10.1 and from the CEO, 12.10.2?
Your worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of administration. With respect to 12.10.2.
One.
Oh, 12.10.1. There was a recruitment exercise that took place in the four municipalities of Port of Spain, San Fernando, Arima and Point 14. If my memory serves me correct, a total of approximately 1,200 applicants were successful. They are in the process of receiving their letters to write exams. At my office for San Fernando district, 340 persons were successful in that exercise. At present, yet to distribute just 14 letters to persons. So almost everyone has collected their letters to write the exam. The exam will be taking place on March 11, I believe, at Naprima College for both San Fernando and Point 14 applicants.
And what would the process that you're on your feet, Mr. Martin, after they, how would that impact on San Fernando in terms of the officers and that sort of thing?
Well, on completion of the exams, they'll have to go through.
The training process, yeah.
The training process and so on. I'm not too certain as to the number that San Fernando will receive. But I believe that it will be distributed evenly through all the four municipalities.
And I was against the background of your city, showing with your manpower. So let's hope that we could do all in our port, ensure that you get your adequate amount to, that will modest upgrade your officers.
That will be appreciated.
Your worship, members of council, members of admin. With respect to 12.10.2. Two items here to, your worship, the second one, I'll deal with the second one first. The 26 officers and the graduation ceremony. This is carded for, the graduation ceremony is carded for the 9th of March 2018 at the City Hall Auditorium. This is in respect to the municipal police officers for the regional corporations, the other 10 corporations. ESPN Martin spoke about the SASE, which is the two cities, the two boroughs. So item 12.1.0.2 relates to those officers for the regional corporation. But the main item here is the municipal police station. And I would like this to be changed, sorry for so late, to the San Fernando City Corporation Municipal Police Station. I'd like that to be, so therefore we are inserting San Fernando City Corporation Municipal Police Station. Right, so this, as you know, we would have had two drive towards having the building completed. We are using our funds, we are seeking for funds, again, on spend balances. The second phase would have completed recently. However, in terms of for completion of the building, we have the basement floor, we have emergency exit window installation of air conditioning. The first floor, kitchen cupboards with sink and countertops to install first floor painting of work, painting of walls, installation of air condition. Second floor, to decide, to do the layout, internal arrangements for the office spaces. Again, painting, install handrails to install untiled staircase, install air condition and to install dormitory lockers and facilities for that relates to the door.
So are we embarking on this project on a phased basis or are we doing our comprehensive approach?
Well, your worship, so far we would have had two phases and we would have completed the major infrastructural works. This phase here, which also includes, or this, the remaining works, which also includes the external perimeter wall, which is the security, which is probably a very high cost. Again, we have to look to see what we could source in terms of available revenue in the corporation to proceed with these works.
And the question would be, on the completion of this exercise, where, how would the municipal police function? Will they be permanently based there or they'll continue to have existence here? Considerable sums of money are going into this, to this project. How does this redound the people of San Fernando, particularly where we need a strong police presence on the wharf?
Firstly, your worship, in terms of the accommodations right now, as we are aware, the police need accommodation. We have something that is outdated down there. So yes, a major strength would be down there. And council now will have to, we will come at a committee level or maybe at council to decide in terms of other arrangements. We would like to keep their presence, keep a presence at the main compound here at City Hall. However, that will entails providing accommodation for them. We cannot interfere with that building there so that we could have both, you know, utilised while we are doing works on the building. The building will have to be totally turned on and new building would have to be sited there on that site. But in the interim, we will have to find a space for outpost or a post at this compound, your worship, for the police officers.
And do you have a timeframe? Startup timeframe?
No, I don't, I don't know if at this point in time, the engineer would like to speak of this in terms of the timeframe for startup. But I am pretty sure based on what we are trying to achieve, because most importantly, your worship, simultaneously with this project, we have to see about our needs, the needs of the EDs. So anytime we are able to locate some on spend balances, we have to distribute it in the ED as well, your worship.
And this is why we spoke about a phased basis and the understanding I have is that we were going to complete the second floor, where the charge room would be, the cell would be, the storage of whatever it is that you may need and for records. And so have at least a police presence, have the flags, have the signage, whatever it is. Because the type of the various activities that occur down there, we need to have a police presence there. And I mean, this is over a year now, two years now that building was completed. And we seem to be going, I want to say, could we need to really have that police? If it means that they go down there from seven until, you know, the day shift could be there and use the bottom floor pending sourcing of funds to complete the building. We need a police presence on the wharf. So I hope that we will look at that and have those things ready so we could start the process with some kind of timeframe.
Your worship, I just want to add one last thing on this item. Hence the reason why, sorry. Hence the reason why I would have itemized the work to be completed. And we are looking at the basement, first floor, second floor, minor works that would, you know, will make the building, in which we can now occupy the building. Hence the major problem that will remain is that the external security walls. So I have separated it, so that's the way we're going to approach the, in terms of money availability of funds.
There's also a very aesthetically pleasing annex on the northern side of the building. What's the purpose of that annex?
But your worship, the intention of that annex, that annex would have been the part of the heritage, that would have been the heritage part of the entire building. But as you are aware, during the refurbishing of the main building, that entire roof collapsed. The roof was, that was rotted, was timber, it collapsed. And at that point in time, we had to deal with that matter. So we went ahead and refurbished that in the sense of changing the roof and ensuring that all the walls, et cetera, were structurally sound. That part of the building, I believe, should remain open and should still be, even others don't consider it so, should still be considered as a heritage site.
Which begs the question, would it be a security risk?
No, in terms of heritage site means not, not open for public visitation and things like that. But it would be like a landmark in San Fernando that can be observed from the outside because it's just, it was just a little attachment to the building. So it's secured in terms now of the doors, windows, et cetera. It's an open space. And in the interim, I want to suggest that it remains as an open space until we can be able to access it and without any, you know, interference from the police operations for other purposes.
Noted. So we continue on, as we on that, again, as you're on your feet, CEO, as we're talking about presence of state agencies, what about the customs building? Can we get update on that?
Your worship, members of council, members of admin. Engineer could answer that, please?
Your worship, members of council, members of administration. The custom building, there are some minor works to be done. However, the immigration department had made some changes to the design, the original design of their accommodation, which is the container that they had modified. They wanted some adjustments to be made to that container. And the contractor that they had chosen were in the process of having that done. I have not been in contact with the contractor for maybe the last two weeks, but I can find out what is the latest and when it will be coming in.
I've just seen that over a year now, this discussion started. And typical, I mean, I'm not saying that we are full here, but it seems to be we in doing things. The energy or the speed is not there to have it completed. Also, complaints are being made by citizens who come to the mayor's office about some development occurring with reference to the operation of a cruise vessel. They have installed tables and different other facilities there. And they have events there. How is that going to impact on this development? Is it going to impede the space required for the booting of vessels by customs for examination? And this is a serious matter because as it stands right now, foreigners are coming to San Fernando to purchase hardware and food stuff, which is business and which contributes to the economy. And they need to have couple of proper checks and balances because it's not a port of entry. And this is why it is important for us to allow the customs and immigration to have a presence there. And we should, we must ensure that there's no hindrance as we move forward in providing that space for those state agencies, which is critical. So we move to page 8. Could we get an update on 12.13? I know that statements were made with reference to the dog compound. Counter statements have been made. There's reference to a particular figure. Could we get an update on this, please?
Your worship, members of council, members of admin. This, I know, this, subsequent to this meeting, this request from ministry came to council. Councillor had a discussion on the matter. And it was decided that the council would like to meet with the project unit of the Ministry of Local Government. And I did communicate that to them via an email. And I told them that we would be available at any time for a meeting in San Fernando or even at Port de Spain. But the intention here is that, as you are aware, of the existence of the facility down there, it is something that is underutilized right now because, one, it cannot be accessed properly and, two, it does not provide adequate facilities, not just for the animals but for the staff there. And that has always been our problem and our challenge. This funding that is, will be given to the exercise, I don't think the money would be given directly to us, but it will be given to the exercise, will solve all that problem. And council will want to make sure that those concerns that I just highlighted are addressed with that first money, first tranche of money, as opposed to other peoples, you know, in Puerto there, what they think should be down there first. So we are waiting for that meeting, your worship.
Noted. Page 9. 12.16 street signage. I know the minister at the last meeting spoke about a project throughout the 14 corporations to deal with street signs. I have a matter I would like to raise with my council members to take for consideration, that we revisit some of the streets and the names. And this will be an excellent opportunity for us to address this issue and how appropriate some of those names are and how they apply to our streets. I remember councillor Paris had, was councillor Paris, so I know, had done something. And a former councillor, Ali, had done something with reference to Rodney Wilkes. So as we embark on this project, it may be a good opportunity for you to look at and make recommendations on naming some of the streets. One of my concerns, my research, is that we have two streets, Irving Street and Freeling Street. Those streets are named after former governors. Irving Street was named after governor Sir Sanford Irving. What is strange about that is that Sir Sanford Irving is the man who commissioned the Cambolé rats. And you know, that is a pet project, a pet topic for me these days. And this is a man who commissioned the Cambolé rats in Port de Spain that could have stopped Carnival. And we name Irving Street after a governor who took a decision that could have had a very devastating impact on the development of our culture. For this to that, parallel to Irving Street is Freeling Street. And Freeling Street is named after Governor Freeling, who actually had all the constables confined to barracks to prevent the attack on the masqueraders. And that's strange and peculiar, that two governors who won for and won against were now alongside in San Fernando. So maybe the decision to name Freeling Street after Governor Freeling may be based on his intervention by confining the constables to the barracks to allow the masqueraders to play on the Cambolé rats, not to continue during the course of the Carnival Monday and Carnival Tuesday of 1881. So this is something that we could probably visit and say, is it appropriate to have Irving Street name after Governor Irving in light of the atrocity decision made by him? And there's another challenge where although in connection with Governor Freeling, all the Governor Freeling intervened and stopped the Cambolé rats. He also is the one who, in 1882, I think it was, when the San Fernando Borough Council made a request for the development of the waterfront and for water because at the time waters only supplied by the Paradise Pond, which was muddy water, and we wanted a water projection. And he agreed when he met the council to sanction it and went behind the back and turned his back on San Fernando. So San Fernando was very, very angry about Governor Freeling. And how, it was so serious that because of his intervention in stopping the Carnival, he was recalled to London. And that's how serious it was. He was recalled for interfering, for confining the police to barracks. How could he do that? And that was the power of the elites of the day and how Carnival was able to evolve. So all those considerations must be given in our decision making. As a matter of fact, the San Fernando, when Governor Freeling left Trinidad, San Fernando were very happy. And the San Fernando gods wrote articles saying that we were happy to see him go. So, you know, those things should be considered in our decision making when we talk about naming streets after people who contributed to the development of the city of San Fernando. So I'd ask councillors to do their research and look at where they are in their area. This is a wonderful opportunity as our ministry is embarking on this for us to correct or change some things that occurred over the years. May we continue on page 9? 12.17.1, illegal signs and billboards. They are springing up like mushrooms all over the city of San Fernando. I know we spoke about a policy, I know meetings were held between the COBSEC and some providers. I know that the CEO have been speaking about this and not taking action. I know the engineer had a development occurred this week. Could we get an update from the appropriate voice?
Your worship, members of council, members of administration. We had an exercise on Monday where we removed a number of billboards from the terrible link road. With, of course, with the assistance of the city police. It's an ongoing exercise and we will be doing further investigations to make determinations as to what we need to remove and have them so removed. There is one board that was not interfered with. That individual has an agreement with the corporation and as a result of that, we did not.
And we need to make it clear that that is the approach that anybody, you cannot walk into San Fernando and do what you want as some people are attempting to do. The San Fernando city is run by the council. You need to seek, you know, permission. It has to be done in accordance with our rules and stipulation and guidance. And also in terms of how we derive revenue. So I know Malonco, COBSEC, CEO.
Particularly, we have to be thinking out of the box and being creative in terms of where, how we find money. And I think it's a good scheme for us to develop and a good project for us to bring in revenue. But it has to be on an organised way and this is what we should be doing. I'm very happy to be informed by the CEO that. But because of the exercise on Monday, persons are now calling in and want to, want to get involved. So it's a good initiative and let us continue with that.
Yeah, so we now move, continue. We still on page 9, I think? And page 10. So we will continue on the announcements.
Your worship, members of council, CEO, members of administration, good morning. Monripo Navet rises to present the obituaries. And they are as follows. The first one is for Miss Donna Marina Carter. She lived through the period 10th March 1945 to 2nd January 2018. She grew up in Monripo. She was a student of Saint Joseph Convent, San Fernando. She was a former schoolteacher. She was a Minister of Ecclesiastical Affairs in the office of the Prime Minister. She was also the High Commissioner to the Republic of South Africa. She was survived by her husband, John Hunt. The other person... Have to put on my glasses for this one. I'm announcing the passing of Mr. Carly Mack. He is one of the foundation members of the JTA, sorry, of the JTA establishment. He died on Monday, the 26th of February. Mr. Mack was one of the leading persons in the organization. And he's a household name throughout San Fernando. Their organization continues to exist up to this day with the JTA supermarket in Movie Town and one at C3. And that's among the other outlets they have in San Fernando. Mr. Mack will be greatly missed by his entire family. And we at the San Fernando City Corporation wish to extend our condolences to the family. It is to be noted that Mr. Mack's funeral service would be held at Saint Benedict's, sorry, at Saint Benedict's Roman Catholic Church, La Romaine, at 10:00 a.m. on Thursday, the 1st of March, to be followed by a private cremation. Yeah, by a private cremation. So I announce those two persons and may the souls, their souls and the souls of all the faithfully departed, to the mercies of God, rest in peace.
Your worship, members of council, CEO, members of administration. I rise at the moment to add to the list of those who have departed us. A name of a young lady who may not have been old enough to have made a great impact, but the loss of a young life, your worship, in the city of San Fernando is to be noted. This passing made the rounds of social media and the regular print and electronic media. Miss Alia Bernard, a former student of the Marabella North Government Secondary School, who died on Wednesday, the, I believe that was the 22nd of February, of very suddenly and of unexplained and unknown reasons so far. And your worship, as you have often said, our young people are our future and our hope in this country. And so I take this opportunity to add our voice and, with your permission, the condolences of his worship, the mayor, and the rest of the San Fernando City Council and Corporation at the passing of this young life.
Mr. Mack, respectless, stand for a minute's silence. Committee reports for acceptance. Finance planning and allocation of resources.
Your worship, I move for the acceptance of the Finance Planning and Allocation Committee Report of meetings held the 16th of January 2018 and on the 25th of January 2018.
Can I get a second, please?
Good morning, your worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of administration. I, Alderman Johannes Deen Ryan, do second.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention in motion, sky, public health?
Good morning, once again, his worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of administration. I, Alderman Johannes Deen Ryan, rise for the acceptance of the Public Health Committee Report of meeting held on the 25th of January 2018.
Your worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of administration, Marabella South, Vista Bella, rise to second.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention in motion, sky, physical infrastructure and transport?
Your worship, members of council, CEO, members of administration, Monripo Navet rises for the acceptance of the Physical and Infrastructure and Transport Committee Report of meeting held on the 18th of January 2018, 16th, sorry, of January 2018.
Can I get a second, please?
Your worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of administration, Marabella East, so second.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention in motion, sky, personal?
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. His worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of administration, I, Alderman Thomas, rise to move the acceptance of the Personal Committee Meeting held on the 16th of January 2018.
Your worship, members of council, CEO, members of administration, Monripo Navet rise to second the acceptance of the...
All in favor? Any against, any abstention in motion, sky, committee reports for adoption, planning and development?
Good morning, your worship, Mr. CEO, members of administration, members of council, Koki Turoba, rise for the adoption of the Planning and Development Committee Report Meeting held on the 16th of January.
Second.
Good morning, your worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of administration, Marabella East, please to second.
All in favor? Any against, motion is carried, parks and institutions?
Your worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of administration, Marabella South, Vista Bella, rise for the adoption of the Parks and Institution Committee Report Meeting held on the 16th of January 2018.
Your worship, members of council, CEO, members of administration, Monripo Navet rise to second the moving of the adoption of the report.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention in motion, sky, general purposes?
Your worship, CEO, members of council, members of admin, move for the adoption of the General Purpose Committee Report Meeting held on the 16th of January 2018.
Your worship, members of council, CEO, members of administration, Lazy Four East, Spero, rises to second.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention, emotionless, carried, education and youth development?
Your worship, members of council, CEO, members of administration, I rise for the adoption of the Education and Youth Development Committee Report of meeting held on the 16th of January 2018.
Your worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of administration, Koki Turoba, rise to second.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention, emotionless, carried, culture and the arts?
Your worship, Mr. CEO, members of council, members of administration, I rise for the adoption of the meeting, culture and the arts, held on the 25th of January 2018.
Your worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of administration, Koki Turoba, rise to second.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention in motion, sky, public claims and liabilities?
Your worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of administration, I, Alderman Shane Samuel, do rise for the adoption, for the report of public claims and liabilities on the 25th, held on 25th of January 2018.
Good morning, your worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of administration, I, Alderman Johannes Deen Ryan, do second.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention, emotionless, carried, sports and social services?
Thank you, your worship, good morning. Your worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of administration, I rise for the adoption of the meeting, sports and social services, held on the 25th of January 2018. Thank you.
Your worship, members of council, CEO, members of administration, Monripo Navet rise to second the adoption of the report.
Any against, any abstention, emotionless, carried, security and disaster?
Good morning, your worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of admin. I, Levin Smith, rise for the Committee Report of meeting held on 25th January 2018.
Can I get a second, please?
His worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of administration, I rise to second...
All in favor? Any against, any abstention, emotionless, carried, tourism and heritage?
Your worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of admin, I, Levin Smith, will stand again and ask for the Committee Report of Tourism and Heritage, held on 25th January 2018, to be adopted.
Your worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of administration, Marabella South, Vista Bella, rise to second.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention, emotionless, carried? CEO, do we have any petitions?
Your worship, members of council, members of admin, no petition for the, your worship.
Any motions?
No, no motions for the, your worship.
Explanations?
No personal explanation for that, for the, your worship.
Questions?
From the administration, no questions for the, your worship.
And we have ratified, do we have ratified the committees?
Yes.
In the documents?
Yes.
And you have urgent matters?
Your worship, Mr. CEO, members of council, members of administration, I rise to make an excuse for my colleague, Anderson Williams, Constable Anderson Williams. He has meddled of vehicular accident and he has to be excused for this meeting. Thank you.
Noted.
Your worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of administration. Marabella South, Vista Bella, I'd like to thank the San Fernando City Corporation and all those who assisted in the opening of the Marge Land, Mutulands Recreation Ground. I'd like to thank his worship, the mayor, for being present. I'd like to thank the acting city engineer, Mr. Dennis Albert. I'd like to thank the sanitation department for also assisting, Mr. Gerard Ramarak. I'd like to thank the CPEP gangs that helped me in getting that ground repaired for that occasion.
Constable, just suggest that you just, you don't use the term gang.
What do you call it? Team, okay, team.
You can call it T-shirt, you know?
Yes, I subject a correction, yes. And the reason why I like to highlight this today, because this had been happening for the last four years, you know? I've been lobbying to try to get that grounds open. And eventually it reached, it happened. You know, and it was a whole transformation because, you know, on a field of darkness and then suddenly you see lights, there did be lights. So that was a great thing to happen. And I just want to thank everyone who assisted in making this a reality. It did happen. And as all my colleagues always say, you must have the will. Though, I mean, no matter whatever trials you meet, things will happen. And I want to thank every single person around this whole shoot today that made it possible. TAN Tech also, who are the ones who instrumental in doing that program. So thanks to TAN Tech. So thanks to everyone.
Member of Parliament for San Fernando East.
And we will continue to do what we have to do. Thank you very much, okay.
Thank you, Constable. We are very passionate on behalf of his electoral district and other stakeholders who contribute. And I was there, it was a very successful event and well done. Members, Carnival 2018 is behind us. What is now important is that we all take the requisite time, as the carnival season is behind us, to understand the importance of the successes of these groups and individuals. Citizens have always been noted as being a wellspring of talent and dedication to arts and culture. As a purveyor of the art and culture, I can see without reservation that this industry has a powerful capability to act as a tool to strengthen our community bonds and bolster economic activity in our city. The groups and individuals who have won and placed in this year's carnival has given us the opportunity, have given us the opportunity to revitalize our carnival. We must take this opening to further promote, foster and drive our carnival celebrations to attract more participants and observers as we seek to afford better opportunities for our city, as well as our citizens, to seize these positive economic opportunities. A bigger carnival experience in San Fernando represents a seasonal financial windfall for promoters and where citizens imbued with entrepreneurial zeal can grow their business across many major and cottage industries, whether in food, equipment or service provision. As such, we now have an opportunity to maximize the potential to jumpstart our city's economy. This effort will require a greater relationship between all arms of the city, our fellow citizens, as well as external agencies. Without cooperation and understanding, we will lose out on this prospect yielded to us by our success from Carnival 2018. This begs the question, were we able to do so in light of the events which occurred? One of the major hurdles that we need to surmount is that of a more efficient and emphatic relationship with the police service during the season. Given the current situation in Trinidad and Tobago, we understand that the rigors, dangers and responsibility imposed on the members of the protective services. The similarities of action taken this year sadly mirrors that of the Cambolé riots of 1881 in Portis Paine and by extension, the riots on Coffee Street in 1884, where during the bloodshed, several masqueraders were beaten by the police under the instruction of Captain Baker. This was an attempt to suppress our cultural expression and is grouped by certain segments of our then society and carried out by the police. I have a document here, a book written by Michael Anthony. And it's called The Parade of the Carnivals of Trinidad and Tobago, 1839 to 1889. And on page 11, I can read, "In San Fernando, but despite armed police reinforcement, the Cambolé masqueraders took to the streets at about 1:30 a.m. on Carnival Monday. Police confronted a group of Cambolé masqueraders on the corner of Lower Hillside and Coffee Street and a tumultuous battle ensued. In the end, the masqueraders had to retreat, leaving much blood on the roadway." I can continue reading from this book about the history documented on Coffee Street and Lower Hills, corner of Lower Hillside and Coffee. It sounds familiar. And I will ask anybody who is interested in history to follow this. We can look at what occurred there and may reference me to this book on the historical aspects of the art form and what should not happen. I have another document here. Another book actually. And permit me to just read. "The Florida State University College of Music, Music and Healing with the Skiffle Band Studio Orchestra in San Fernando, Trinidad", by Jeffy Drones. "A dissertation submitted to the College of Music in partial fulfillment of the requirements for the degree of Doctorate of Philosophy. The degree was awarded in spring of 2010. It's copyrighted. And this is a document done as a thesis by Professor Jones on Coffee Street in San Fernando." And why I'm bringing this information out this morning is to more or less highlight the importance of our culture and what we have been able to have done over the years. Recently, I've had the opportunity over the years to represent Trinidad and Tobago in the arts. I performed with Peter Minshall in Europe and Asia in the Madison Square Garden in New York. And as a pan player, I performed at Royal Albert Hall in London and also Madison Square Garden in New York. So I have a passion for these things. And I'm saying that we cannot suppress the development of the arts because we can look at the opportunities presented for us. Those of us who are familiar with the arts and the progress we have made, we will know that Peter Minshall had the opportunity to use our carnival costume for the opening of the Olympics in Atlanta. And that is the potential of our art form. The actions of the powers that be did not stop there. The steel man pioneers of the 1940s and early 50s were treated with the same level of cultural disrespect. In 1960, a Guardian quote said that a member of Tokyo State Orchestra was taken to court. And Magistrate Camacho said, "I have no mercy for any steel man. Take him away." It was 1960. I am making a clarion call to the relevant authorities today to revoke the convictions against the early practitioners of the instrument, of the steel man instrument and the development of the art form of our national instrument who were critical to its advancement over the ensuing years. Where would the steel man be today if the police had their way? Given our current social environment, respect to crime, it will be irresponsible for anyone to place the security of our citizens second to the pursuits of cultural and economic propensities. What I am putting forth is that we now carefully examine the situation and put it into proper context where viable long-term solutions can be sought and not abrupt knee-jerk reactions which can have protracted ramifications. If we are not astute in our observation and reaction to these issues, we risk limiting our future potential and the safety of our citizens. As a result, hampering our future growth. What occurred on Carnival Tuesday might have provided us with an excellent opportunity to engineer better solutions to the benefit of our citizens collaboratively with the protective services. And on behalf of the council, I am ready to undertake this endeavor. In closing, I would like to congratulate the winners of the various carnival competitions who have spectacularly represented San Fernando this year. Your dedication and talent to your representatives' art forms has delivered not only a success to your team and organization, but also for our city. Congratulations in order for both pan elders and golden hands for placing first in the medium band and small band respectively. Carbon Airlines Skiffle also made our city proud by placing second in the large band category. And notably, second place in the Junior Panorama was owned by NAP's Combined Steel Orchestra. Gloria Dalting made us proud with her stellar representation of Gem of the Ocean, awarding her second place in the Queen of the Bands competition in Portispin. And Marlon Rampasad tied for third place in the King of the Band with his representation of The Midas Touch. Former Consul Rondell Donova, not hearing any thumping of the desk, pulled off a stunning upset, placing third in the Calypso King Competition singing The Problem. And finally, Kifan Kalis, grandson of Dr. Leroy Kalis, continues in his family's artistic footsteps, taking first place in the Junior X-Tempo King Competition. Your success further showcases our city and the potential of our citizens to represent our nation's culture and the local and international landscape. I look forward to our celebrations next year and the improvement that will enact to provide a safer and more prosperous, enjoyable carnival celebrations in the city of San Fernando. I thank you.